Good evening and welcome to the June 11th School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. Dr. Leclerc?
Good evening, everyone. Could we please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next regular school committee meetings will be July 23rd, August 27th, that's a change date, and September 10th, 2019. The last day of school is Tuesday, June 18th. Students and families are encouraged to have a safe and enjoyable summer vacation. The first day of school for students is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. And I would just like to give the committee an update. We had some students that just participated, or, um, excuse me, students that are part of the "we" group that you had a presentation from the other day. And two of the students have been awarded a copy, the prize, for an all-expense-paid trip to a camp this summer, the "we" camp in Canada. And it's all expense paid. So I know that they were giving you a little bit of information on that when they were here presenting. And so they're very excited and I told them that I would share that news with the committee. So they'll be working with students from all over the, all over the world. Thank you. That's it?
Do we have correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
Do we have guests?
No.
Alright, now is the time for public speak. If there's anyone who'd like to get up and talk to us.
My name is Cristiano Corcello.
A little louder.
My name is Cristiano Corcello. I live in East Hampton, Massachusetts, tutorial way.
A little louder.
I live in East Hampton, Massachusetts, tutorial way. And...
Alright, what do we want to talk about?
And I want to talk about, about, so, I want to get 16 minutes till I get a tardy pass.
A little louder, yeah, 16?
16 minutes till you get a tardy pass. More reading time. I want, I want blowups. Um, for field day again for one year. And I want to thank my teacher, my kindergarten teacher, Ms. Pulia, who's retiring next year. And, and end school one less day and start school one less day. One less day.
Do you have any questions for me?
Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Questions.
Did you have a good first year of school?
This is my second year.
Second year, sorry. Did you have a good second year of school?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
Who was your teacher this year?
Ms. Burton.
Ms. Burton, nice.
Can I ask you about the tardy pass? You said you wanted 16 minutes for a tardy pass?
16, 16 till I get a tardy pass. So like, a tardy pass is where like, if you're late, you get, you go to the office and get one and bring it back.
So what is the current time? The current sort of time?
What is it now?
Yeah.
I think it's like, I don't know what the current time is.
So we, we should find out.
But you want more time before you get a tardy pass?
Yeah.
Is that the issue?
You're going to be late.
Is there a reason your, your mother or father are getting you late to school every day?
I take the bus.
Oh, you take the bus?
It's not.
They're tough, huh? Do you want to explain why you want more time to eat lunch? I thought that was a really good reason.
Oh, I didn't see that yet.
Okay, say that.
I want more time to eat lunch because it feels like it's just five minutes.
I hear that from a lot of kids, actually. You're very rushed because you want to go out to recess too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good ideas.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Our student representative has graduated.
Graduated.
So we will go on to, uh, thank you. And we, we'll have a new representative in September. So we'll go on to subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, so the Finance Subcommittee did meet. And we've, based on the budget that was submitted, well, a couple of different steps have happened. So we approved a budget as a school committee. After that, a different budget level was proposed by the mayor to the city. And so we had to review that. A lot of work was done by Allison and Dale and the rest of her team to be able to come up with additional ways to make that balance. And so a couple of different things that I wanted to point out, and you guys do have basically all new packets to go in your information to keep you sort of up to date. So all of these old ones you can just take out and recycle or choose what you want to do with them. But all of the new budgets are here. And let's see if it's listed in here. I think on the very last page.
They don't have that.
Oh, they don't have that page. Well, so on the last page, it does review some of the different changes. The, some of the changes that changed from what we had agreed to, to the current budget. One thing that I think is really important here because a lot of misinformation has been put out on Facebook, is that there has been zero cuts to music and arts. I think that's really important for any parents watching, but also for us to know. There was a lot of rumors going around that White Brook Middle School was losing all of its music department. And that's not true. So no cuts were made to music and arts. There has been some additional shifts around and some decreases to some different sub-lines, substitute lines. A change in terms of how we have staffing for the library because we've had, we just sort of, teachers will be taking their classes in there. That's how it's already done. And so there'll be a change in that. So, but unfortunately, we're not going to be able to have the additional paraprofessional in the library.
That's at White Brook specifically?
That's at White Brook specifically, yes, thank you. There is also just some additional ways that we were able to make some savings through a couple retirements. And so that'll be able to have some different savings as well as a physics teacher who's going to be going on leave likely. So there's some different ways that we were able to adjust things based on different from what we'd previously agreed to, to this new current budget that reduced the budget by approximately $131,000. And, let's see. One of the things that we were able to keep level funding for the diversity work so that we had hoped originally to be able to increase that, but unfortunately, we're able to just maintain what we've been spending there. And there are some additional things that we'd be looking at into next year as we look at just some different ways that our school district budgets around some of the different teacher responsibilities. So some of that I'll be looking into the negotiations, contract negotiations that we'll be going to in the fall. Any questions?
I have two questions. Thank you for helping to clarify about the arts and music. There also seems to be a pretty virulent rumor about health, health class being cut.
Thank you. Yeah, let me, let me clarify that too because it's, yeah, that's another one that's been out there. So health class is definitely going to still happen. We're not losing health class. The position, though, I guess the way that we've done it up to this point is that there was a specific teacher teaching health class. That position is not going to be continued, but the teachers are already trained in it. So between the PE teachers, the counselors, and the principal, all are trained in teaching that class. And so those responsibilities for maintaining it. And, and already, health class is already taught with different people helping to different pieces of different units taught within it. So it's already kind of a group of different people covering the whole class together. It's just going to be changing now to who's going to be covering that and how it's covered. But it will still maintain, there will still be a health class for all of our students at White Brook Middle School. So yeah, those are two unfortunate rumors that a lot of misinformation got out there through Facebook. And so it's, yeah. So again, no cuts to music and arts. And health class will continue in a slightly altered form, but it will definitely fully continue.
And can I ask then, so with the diversity and equity staffing, does that mean that we are not converting Asher Hamilton's position to a full-time?
Yes.
Yes, so she's, she was going to be, she, there was some original, some different discussions happening around that anyway. We were looking to increase the overall diversity staffing to a full-time position. But instead, it's going to stay with Asher's position at point seven.
The other thing I wanted to ask, can you clarify the nurses' positions? Because I've heard a few things regarding that as well.
Yeah, so the nurses' positions, it's actually a state mandate that all nurses are supposed to be LPNs?
RNs.
RNs, excuse me. And we have LPNs. And so we are transitioning over the next few years to be able to staff all of our positions with RNs. And so we had currently one RN who was the district nurse who sort of, sort of oversaw. She is going to be moving into one position. So that is one position less. And then, and then over the next few years, we're going to transition the other schools to additional RNs. But we're also going to be able to do that in light with our transitioning schools to different, different sizings, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else that you'd like, Dr. Leclerc?
No, I think you described it wonderfully.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. So we do need though, to actually move forward with a vote to be able to approve this new budget. So do I have anybody who'd like to make a motion to accept these changes to our budget?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the budget.
A second.
All those in favor? Thanks for all your hard work with that. And could the, a PDF of what was passed? So then we can update the general budget. But when we post it and then we'll, we send it out to the state? Great, thank you.
Yep.
It, yeah, it won't, yeah, next week is fine. Thank you. Allison, do you?
We have not met, but I am, been planted on tag, but trying to catch up with a back staffer member who has a concern about transportation. So we'll need to set up a meeting at some point to catch up with her and really understand what issues. We'll have to set a meeting.
Jonathan, we have a collaborative?
We do. So we met on May 29th in North Hampton. I'm going to try to kind of focus more on sort of what I think are the highlights rather than going through my full report for you guys. But if anybody ever wants to see this, by all means, let me know. I take lots of notes. So we had a excellent presentation from their teacher licensure and credentialing program, which is something they do for educators that already have an undergraduate degree. This is sort of going beyond that. And what they offer is excellent. It's sort of, the program is put together to be really cost-effective. And it really sort of is geared towards teachers, what they call teachers of record. So people who are already in a classroom. They said that 80% of the folks that go through their program are teachers of record. They endorse educators in 14 different fields, the largest being students with modern disabilities and then English as a second language. Although they've had a surge in reading specialist candidates as well. They also have an administration leadership program for those who are looking to sort of move up in their careers. Slightly smaller program, but the standards are still rigorous. There are some new standards put out, I believe in 2015, that they've sort of built a new kind of program around. Anybody who's interested can get graduate-level credits from any of these courses, aside from just the license. They have a partnership with Fitchburg State to provide that for a slightly higher cost. And everything is hybrid online with a few face-to-face meetings. Even if somebody doesn't need licensure, each one of these courses covers 67 and a half PDPs of the required 150 every five years, is it? So can take out a big chunk of that right off the bat. So if there are any, you know, educators who are in our district, I would definitely recommend pointing them to this for that, both to save some money and just have an excellent experience. One thing I wanted to point out about matters of action because I think my understanding is it's going to eventually come to this committee. We had a second school district, Worthington School District, submit a request to become a member of the collaborative, which we approved. And now both Worthington and you recall Gateway, which I told you about last time, are going to be moving through this process to become members. They're sort of treated as de facto members now while all that paperwork gets in place. But my understanding is the individual school committees have to vote as well to approve this. There was talk of trying to get that sooner rather than later because there's some committees that take the summer off. I've seen nothing on it and it didn't make it on the agenda. So I'm going to guess you guys saw nothing about it. But that will be coming up in the future. I would recommend it. But we can talk about that when the time comes. We received a new rule that the Board of Directors will be evaluating the CES Business Director in addition to the Executive Director. That's something, that's a new rule just for collaboratives only. But I would question if maybe that's something they're going to make us do on a smaller level moving forward as well. I guess we'll see. The finances continue to be looking up. They're currently, have an excess. They're not really allowed to carry over extra funds at the end of the year. So I'm sure they're going to find out, you know, good ways to spend that. But it's a big difference from last year where we were significantly in the hole. Let's see. There has been some talk for the first time of increasing some of the non-member rates, which is something that I think they're going to bring to us at future meetings. Right now, there's not much of a discrepancy, but in order to incentivize districts becoming members, that's something they're going to sort of pursue also to just increase income. I always find it amazing to learn sort of, you know, the inner workings of this organization. So I thought I'd just offer a little bit of context real quick about the collaborative, just because it came up at the meeting. So they have 550 people on their payroll. Every other week, they pay out $1.1 million to their employees. And we just approved their budget of $38 million for FY '20. So they do a lot and they're all over the place. We completed our evaluation of the Executive Director. Everything was positive. He's done great work to improve himself despite the fact that he always gets positive ratings. So I have a full summary of that if anybody wants to see it. And then just a couple of bits of news. So they're going to be resurrecting a plan for property development. I said they can't carry over extra funds, but they can sort of have a plan for capital improvement moving forward, which allows them to sort of, I think, use some of the money that they have in the future, if that makes sense. Right now, they have a lot of different things in a lot of different places. They have like some parking lots that they rent, some that they own. And from their perspective, the building that they have in North Hampton has grown in value as North Hampton's become, you know, thriving city. So their thought is that they could find another location, sort of bring everything under one roof, leverage the value of that property and, you know, make themselves better prepared to move forward and save some more money through that. And then the last thing they just happened to mention, and I think this is, you know, good to know as we talk about our own budget and some of the struggles that we have to meet the needs of our school district. I know we're always writing grants and whatnot, but I know that there are probably some grants out there that are larger than an individual school district can really hope to take on. And they say that they're always looking for opportunities to sort of bring districts together. And they themselves apply for grants, like joint grants, that will serve multiple districts. So if there's anything out there that you ever see that you feel like you want but can't get, I'm sure they would love to hear about it. So my next meeting, we actually have another meeting this month. We're doubling up this time for some reason.
And then are you skipping July?
Yeah, that'll be the last one for a couple of months. So I'll talk to you about it early July. Any questions? If anybody ever wants to give me feedback about what you want to hear about, let me know.
Well, so here's a question, Jonathan. I've got a question. So you said they pay out a payroll of $1.1 million every two weeks?
Yeah.
But they have a $38 million budget?
I guess.
That does, that math doesn't work out.
Well, it kind of does.
So I get, because it's pay, okay, never mind.
Twenty-six.
So it's a more than half their budget, for sure.
Twenty-six, babe.
Yeah, because they've got more, obviously, programs.
Yeah, but just like, you know, just like the school district, most of your money's going towards staffing.
Yup.
I guess it does. That was really good. Boy, I'll tell you, you take more notes than I did when I was doing it. I really appreciate it. I, I always got involved in listening to what was going on. I forgot to write. You know, I'd have to go home and try to figure out what I'm going to write. So, a nice job, really. You're very good. So, okay. Alright, how about the education policy updates?
I just saw that the Pine Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School is again appealing the Board of Ed's denial of their expansion request. And again, all the sort of statistics that have been troubling, not, not only for people like us, but even for the very pro-charter Board of Ed remain true, including the fact that PVCICS is serving only 5.5% of Hispanic students while sending districts are 34.8%. The charter school serves 16% low-income students while the sending districts are 49.4%. And they serve 5.9% of students with disabilities while the sending districts have 20%. So despite their slogan of being an engine of integration, they have not really made any improvements toward replicating the, this, this various groups that we see represented in the sending public school districts in their own school population. So if anyone would like to send input, we have until tomorrow. You can send an email to BOE, as in Board of Ed, at doe.mass.edu. And then they will be deliberating and making a decision on June 25th. So if you have a moment, send an email.
We didn't send one from our committee like we normally do.
We didn't, I guess because this is an appeal as opposed to the sort of formal request. I, I don't think there's been much talk about it.
I think all our stuff will be carried forward already.
Yeah, well, yes.
It's still included.
So the, the next, the next time this is on the agenda, do they actually make a determination on the appeal? Or is it just taking in information? I guess, what's the?
My understanding is they will decide on the 25th. On whether the, on the appeal.
Okay, excellent.
That was my understanding of it.
So if our letter is going to carry over, then why is there like a deadline for the emails? Do you know?
Well, I don't know if our, I don't know that they will actually like, have our letter on their desks on June 25th, right? Because we sent it in at the expansion request as opposed to the appeal. However, the things that we cited as our concerns in that letter remain true. So given the Board of Ed found them concerning, at the first time around, you would hope that they would just deny the appeal?
We can resend the letter with the updated date.
Yeah, just thinking, why don't we do that?
With the updated date.
Why don't we just resend as an email?
Great. Um, it, yeah, what's the right protocol for doing that?
Yeah, that'll just bring it forward again.
Great. Do you think that that should, is that appropriate to come from me? Or should that come from you? Or how does that matter?
I think we have a copy of it, right?
We just fix and, update our minutes, update our dates on it?
Can Marissa, can't Marissa just send it? Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, great, I'll delay.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep, of course.
I just, I just, there was a beautiful letter.
Yeah.
And I think if we just resend it, it will come up as, you know.
Yeah, I agree. Well, yeah, I think it's important too for the Board to know that we're, we're still paying attention.
Mm-hmm. Alright, thank you. So you're going to do that. Alright, Wellness Committee. We won't be meeting again until September.
Wow, okay. Alright. That's why we're at school.
That makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense. I just, I'm amazed at how much this year has flown by, that's all. Alright, Health and Safety.
We have not met, but I am reaching out to Larry just to touch base with him about the sort of summer plans around particularly like White Brook Middle School's carpeting and just sort of see what he's got on the plans to sort of keep on schedule. So if there's anything that comes out of that, I'll bring it up at the next, in the July meeting, but otherwise.
Are we going to do what we did last time? Is meet and just go at the end of August?
We can.
We can, if you want. Let me, let me reach out to him and I'll, I'll bring it back to the July meeting. And we can talk about it then.
Alright.
I mean, we did just, we did just cut custodial services a little bit in the district, so. Just, just, just enough, yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything for other?
I, I guess I would have a question. In the spirit of sort of addressing rumors in the community and concerns that sort of circulate in these informal spaces, I have heard from some parents who felt surprised to learn that our new high school principal was serving as VP in South Hadley during the very tragic incident with Phoebe Prince. And I imagine this was something that was discussed by the search committee and probably by you during the interview process. But I, I don't know if it would be appropriate at this point or at some point to, to sort of talk about what you understand, how he processes that event or how he brings lessons from that event here or, you know.
Sure. Do you want me to address it now?
If you, that's, that would be, that would be great.
Um, so Mr. Evans was the assistant principal back in, I believe it was 2010. And for those people in the audience that are not aware, the committee that we had that did the initial intake of applications and did the initial round of interviews was made up of parents, high school parents, students, administrators, Julianne, our diversity chair, teachers elected or chosen by the Teachers Union, support staff. I wasn't part of it. Dale ran the search, our business manager.
I was there.
And Jonathan was our school committee rep. So they, I, I was not in the room with them, but I think it's fair to say that they felt their charge was, one of the most important charges they were making was to find someone that was very well-versed around equity issues. And so I think that from the student perspective, from the perspective of everyone on that committee, that was really something that they held in high esteem. They developed questions that were very focused on equity issues, diversity issues, inclusion issues. That was really the driving force of their, of their process, I think it's fair to say. They interviewed, they, they went through all the applicants that they had. They selected a number of applicants to interview. And they felt that he rose to the top of the candidates that they submitted names to for me. So those names were submitted to me. And just as a, as a next step, we held meet and greets at the high school for, that were open to anyone. Families, students, staff, anyone that, the school committee came to some of them. So people could meet him and make their own judgment about who he was and ask questions if they wanted to. We also did an online survey to gather feedback from anyone that attended any of those sessions, if they wanted to give input. And then I had interviews with the three final candidates in which I asked a lot of questions that focused on equity. And then we did, then I did, reference checks. And I will say that one of the things that had a huge impact on me was when I called one of the references that was very instrumental in his first principal position after the South Hadley assistant principal job. And I said, you know, what, what made you really choose him back in 2010, 11, 11, I think? And they said that they went onsite and spoke to many, many students in school at that time, who are no longer obviously at South Hadley High School, and teachers. And they felt that the universal theme that they heard from people was that he was the healing force in that school community. And that really resonated with me because I think that the healing is something that's really important. And I think that unfortunately, if people rely only on news stories that, that happened ten years ago, you know, reporters come in and do a, a story of the issue on that day and don't necessarily follow up and, and capture what happens after the cameras all go away. And so I was very impressed by the feedback that I heard around that. And I, I have heard from, honestly, I've heard from two parents that, that questioned it. I, I don't know, on social media, I don't know, you know. But the two parents I sp, I had conversations with that, that brought up those concerns. Actually, Julianne heard from one of them and shared it with me. You know, I sent that information and they were very satisfied with that response. And I said, you know, if you have other people that wanna ask me, have them ask me rather than, you know, kind of assume that, that we didn't have the best intentions, you know? I mean, that was a very large committee. How many people were on that committee? A dozen people on the screening committee? And so I, I put a lot of trust in the, the brain power around that table that they really put forth some really strong candidates that they felt would be a good fit for what this district needed. So I put a lot of stock in, um, the work that they did. And I have shared some of the concerns with Ms., Mr. Evans. And he is absolutely willing to meet with any families that would like to have a dialogue with him this summer before school starts and he's happy to talk with them. He is going to be scheduling meet and greets over the summer to, you know, extend, you know, an offer for families to come in at different times when it may be convenient and things may be less stressful. And, um, so we'll be sending that out also to the middle school families that might wanna get their eyes on him for, you know, their kids coming up in a few years. So, does that help? When you were there, you, you were at some of the meet and greets.
So, um, yeah, I was at the meet and greet with him. Um, one of the teachers did actually raise that question. Um, and, uh, I would say that the, um, the reflection that I saw in him, um, very honest, emotional, you know, of course, it was a terrible loss. Um, and I think that his recognition of that and able to reflect on that and share that was clear that he was, um, I would say very authentic in his process and that ability to sort of learn from that and grow from that. So I think that where he's gone probably in the last nine years since that happened has really helped him grow as a person, as a leader in a school, um, and a teacher and as a connector with students as well. So I think that everything that I saw coming out of that showed an incredible amount of authenticity and reflection that helps, is gonna help him be a better principal here at EHS, so.
Thank you. I really appreciate that from both of you. Um, that was my, my thought and my hope was that, um, in fact, this was something that would make him an, an even better principal for our school. But, um, it's helpful to, to know exactly what you all saw and were thinking about and so we could communicate that back to people.
Okay. Any other, other? So on to our superintendent update.
Okay, so we have a civics update for you tonight. And Julianne, I think you're going to come up and introduce Brianna and talk to us a little bit about why we're having a civics update?
Why are we having a civics update? It ain't everyone. Um, we're having a civics update because there are clearly not enough people at East Hampton who are civically engaged or else we would have a full house tonight. No, I mean, that's not true. Um, it is true. The, uh, the Commonwealth, um, has implemented a couple of new things, um, for us. And, um, in two sort of different ways have both gotten at, both of these two pathways have gotten at, um, that civic engagement needs to be taught, um, as early as we possibly can teach it. Um, and then we need to continue to, um, to exercise that throughout our students' careers. So this sheet of paper I handed out to you, this has the two pathways, um, that we are increasing our civic education here in the, um, in Massachusetts. The part of the table that's on the left there, it says twenty eighteen history and social science curriculum framework. Those are our new learning standards, um, student learning standards for history and social sciences from pre-K to twelve. And, um, our own Kelly Brown at the high school was on the committee that drafted, um, and gave feedback on these standards. Um, I know she feels very strongly that they are going to really transform, um, history, social science, and civic education in, um, in the state, which feels really important right now. So, um, one of the things in the framework is that it introduces a pathway in which eighth grade becomes an entire year focused on civics. Um, I'm not going to speak about that because I don't teach that course, but that's why Brianna Capeen Perezzo is here with us today. So I'll, I'll let her talk about that part. The second part of this, that's the, did I say the left-hand side of the table or right-hand side of the table?
You said left.
Left, okay. So now we're on the right-hand side of the table. Um, and that was some legislation, um, that went through, so not the Department of, of Ed with the frameworks, but actually through, um, through our, um, our legislature. And that is a requirement, um, a graduation requirement for a civics project. Um, so you can read through those different bullet points, but what we're really focusing on is both, um, the teaching of civics and the civic standards in eighth grade, and then extending that learning and applying it to our community. So, um, one of the things that I really wanted to express to you all was, um, this is an incredible opportunity to get our students really engaged in our local, um, our local government, local politics. Um, the civic engagement at the local community level, I think, is, um, something that could really change the face of this country. And so I'm hugely in support of this, having been a humanities teacher when I was in the classroom. I might be a little bit biased, but, um, I do think that this is just incredibly important, um, work to be doing here in, um, in Massachusetts. Um, do you have any questions for me before I turn it over? Awesome. So Brianna is gonna talk about eighth grade civics.
All right, so I am Brianna Capeen Perezzo, eighth grade teacher, civics. Um, this is our first year piloting the civics curriculum. We actually got a choice of whether or not to start it this year because it wasn't official yet. Um, but we chose this year to kind of be like this really great in-between period because we were getting new teachers at the time and it just seemed to really work out. So that's kind of what we u, used this year for was just what's, how are we gonna implement this? What is it gonna look like in the classroom? Um, so you also got a sheet that looks like this. And this is, on one side, we have practice standards, research, and inquiry-based learning. And on the other side, uh, we have some guiding principles. And really, this is kind of what we want to and what we have to implement, um, pre-K through, I think it's, uh, twelve, yeah. Um, but mostly focused in eighth grade. So this is kind of, has been our guiding light throughout the entire year. Um, so I highly encourage you guys to look at it because it's, they broke this down into such a simple and easy-to-look-at piece of paper to kind of get the gist of what we're doing in civics. We've found that, uh, this year, it was a little rocky at first because, um, they started off the framework with a lot of history, American history, which hadn't necessarily been taught yet to the fifth, sixth, and seventh graders, which eventually, once this is all implemented, we will have, um, more room to focus on civics. So we found that there was a lot of gaps that we had to fill in. Um, next year, we think it'll be even better and going forth, it'll get even stronger because all of those things will have fallen into place by then. Um, and so the civics part didn't end up happening too much until January, so we're gonna, we're, we'll plan better for next year. But, um, we really wanna concentrate, like Julianne said, on local government, getting our kids involved and seeing that they can make a change in the government as young as, as being an eighth grader. Um, and we found that at the beginning of the year, our kids did not feel like they could do anything. They had no power. Um, so by the end of the year, when we ended up having them actually do a town hall with our mayor here, they were like, oh, we actually talked to a politician. We talked to someone who's involved. This is great. And I think they felt a little more empowered than they did at the beginning of the year, which was really the whole point. So, um, that's basically, I think, where we're at right now. We hope that next year's gonna go even better than this year now that we have a good idea of what the state is looking for. The law wasn't passed until, I think, December, so some changes remain. So we have some changes to make in the curriculum too. But, um, the other person who's really highly involved with this is Joanne Drum. So we've kind of been working together to, um, make sure that we are all doing the same thing and on the same path and, um, so that we can implement this the best way possible for next year. So, does anybody have any questions?
So do you, was that town hall the project or does each student have to do their own project? And if so, what were some of the examples of student projects this year?
So the town hall was actually like a secondary thing that we ended up doing. Every, every student ended up doing a project. Um, eventually, it's required that they're gonna have to do some sort of civics engagement thing by the end of the year. Um, they're even talking about possibly, uh, having like a, not MCAS-type of test for civics, but some sort of thing like that, um, to just, uh, make sure that everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing. Their ta, last I heard, but which was summer of last year, and we know how fast things can change in the DOE, but, um, was twenty twenty-one, as soon as twenty twenty-one. Um, so I suspect that we'll get more information from that if and when that happens. Um, but as far as what we did this year, it was just very basic, uh, get involved, civic action, what it takes, how, how to go about it, the process, all of that. And so there were, uh, groups, my, well, my class specifically did groups. There was other teachers did it in a different way, um, but ultimately, they chose a topic, figured out how they might change something, presented on it, and then, um, the local issues were then presented to our mayor, so.
And just, what were some of those examples? I'm just curious.
Um, some of them were about how we spend money as a school. Um, some of it was about littering and the, the pond cleanup. Um, I think a lot of the kids were really focused about recreational, uh, issues that they had. Some saw that they, they wanted to have more basketball time and there was a lot of limitations to that. So they wanted to see if they could change that possibly. Um, just stuff like that. The stuff that really affected them, that they, that mattered to them and they cared about.
Cool, excellent, thank you.
I wanted to compliment you all because we received a lot of emails from the students after they conducted their research and did what they wanted to, whether it was getting more basketball time or clean up in the town, so.
Yeah, we hope to do a lot of that. We wanna, we wanna get them involved at the local level where they can make the most change and hopefully be invested in East Hampton so that when they become adults, they're, they're, they're showing up to our school committee meetings. So.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Uh, just a, a quick question. Um, I've gotten, after the town hall in particular, people have called into the office and asked for next year, if as a member of the community, how they could get involved and support the civics? Like whether it's programming or volunteering. So I don't know where best to push those inquiries, but, you know, four or five folks, um, who helped with the civics academy that we did out of my office would, would love to be supportive of this.
That's awesome. We'd love to, anyone, yeah.
Okay, great.
Another question. It might be, um, too specific, um, but there's just something here near and dear to my heart that I'm surprised to see on this list, uh, which is that these will incorporate the study of current events and news and media literacy, which is obviously such an important part of being a citizen in our world. Um, and I am curious if, uh, you know, if, in my mind, it's, it's so connected, but it's like such a different topic that requires a different lens. And I wonder if you could speak a little bit in how that's going to be incorporated? I also feel like it's the, like, one of the things on here that is most likely to sort of raise concerns of partisanship because of the way people engage with their news. So, um, I, I just wonder if you could describe that a little bit.
So I can only speak of what's happening in my classroom and my guess is that that's what's happening in the other, uh, three or four. And that's that we're not really looking at it in a partisan way. We're looking at, um, articles as a whole and having the kids kind of dissect them on their own and come to their own conclusions. Um, we're there to teach them how to find out if news is real or not. Um, we're not there to tell them what to believe, so.
Sure. So it's, it's a focus on, say, news and journalism specifically?
Right.
Okay. Cause when I think of, so when I think of media literacy, I often think of like, how do we engage with, like, the advertisements we're bombarded with constantly? That's not necessarily a part of it.
Well, it could be, cause like if you're on a news site and you see a ton of different advertisement, that might be a red flag that maybe this isn't the most, uh, honest or, uh, great website to get your information from. But really, the idea is to look at who they're sourcing, where this information is coming from, and then allowing them to then research that piece. And it becomes this big project of, for this one article, it's like five paragraphs long, just to find out if it's true, but it's a necessary skill. So just really dissecting the articles that they're using and making sure that they're legitimate. They're coming from good places.
Excellent point, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Yes. So the program that we've been using, um, is We the People, um, very affordable book, um, goes a long way. And, uh, it was kind of like our lifeline through this whole new process because there's not really a textbook that we've, that's like specific to what we're teaching. This civics framework is very new for the entire country, I think, for the most part. Um, to be so concentrated on local, state, and government, there's a lot of stuff in the framework about Massachusetts as a whole and our rebellious, uh, past. So, um, we've really kind of relied on this book. Um, so if you wanna pass it around, um, I've got some notes in there. We use it often. Um, but it's kind of been our lifeline for this, building this new curriculum that we've kind of just been piecing together during this really, uh, test year for us, so.
We started the same thing in my district and we use that book.
It's, it's valuable. It's very valuable.
And I love to see the course. I love that it's back. I really do.
We also, um, we use iCivics, which is a free program completely online. They have, uh, Massachusetts Scope and Sequence, like specifically for us on the new framework. They were really great about rolling that out. I would say even maybe by November of the school year, which was incredible. Um, they use like different kinds of soft, like games to teach the kids how to navigate the Supreme Court and how to, uh, how a bill becomes a law and, you know, aside from Schoolhouse Rock, so it was really good. It was a really good way to kind of integrate technology with this new framework that we, that we're all learning about now. Very exciting. It is very exciting. We're all very excited.
I was just gonna say, the extent of my civics for school. Still around, Schoolhouse Rocks, do they still use it?
I have a copy. I use it.
I have a copy in my file cabinet.
It's not broke.
If I could just thank you, Brianna, and I just, uh, you know, anytime you bring in a new program or new curriculum, it's a huge undertaking for a teacher.
Oh, definitely, I can imagine.
You know, anytime you do the fir, something for the first time, there's a lot of learning that goes along with it.
We've learned, probably more than the students this year.
And, and to, to say that we kind of got out of, um, in front of this, kind of before the state was even requiring it, I think shows a lot of incentive. And Brianna, in case you don't recall, was one of our Grin Spoon winners this year.
Yes.
Congratulations.
So, I just wanna mention that, that there again, you know, we kind of highlight some of our exceptional teachers and there's an example of Brianna going kind of above and beyond with the civics curriculum, so. And Julianne's been great in getting this off the ground as well, so I don't wanna take anything away from Julianne. She worked real hard.
I was just gonna get up and say the same thing about Brianna.
Oh, okay.
And also a teacher who, um, has come up through this district, so like it's, um.
That's right.
No, but I did have, she was my history teacher.
Teacher.
Yeah, I went to Maple, Whitebrook, all of them. Old, old high school.
So Brianna, yeah, is just one of our, our truly amazing teachers and, um, what she and Joanne have done this year. And it's been, you know, the two of them kind of spearheading, but then, um, guiding the other teachers who have no, like, not a lot of experience in this. And so I've been really impressed with all of the work that they've done this year and we really appreciate it.
It's a really important subject, I think.
Absolutely.
It's a very important time, so, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get your book back?
Not yet.
And I think the, uh, all I would say about the budget is that Maren has really already gone over the budget and the rest, I think, is you.
It's me. Okay. So, um, I'm, if I can find my paper, there we go. I'm just going to give the results of the superintendent evaluation. First off, I wanna thank everybody. I asked for a June third submission of material. thank everybody, I asked for June 3rd submission of materials and your evaluation, and everybody hit June 3rd, so.
Might have been on June 3rd, but we didn't.
It was phenomenal. So that gave me plenty of time to go through it and tabulate this, so, just so everybody knows, um, we don't see each other's evaluations, everybody does it separately, they all get turned in to me, and then I go through them, point by point, um, item by item, and come up with, um, a overall score that everybody gave. This was a really easy one to do, um, because we basically agreed on just about everything, so I'm gonna take us through this, I gave everybody a copy. Professional goals, the first one was professional practice, um, we gave Dr. Leclerc one significant progress, five met her goals, and one exceeded. Student learning, um, everybody agreed that she had met her goals. District improvement, there were two, uh, significant progress, and five met. Um, and just to explain, significant progress doesn't mean, um, just because you, not everybody saw it as meeting, um, a goal, significant progress is really what you want to be able to show in a, in a one-year's time, there's not a lot you can accomplish, so if you get significant progress, that means you are doing what you're supposed to do. I don't want people to see that as something that's lesser, um, or unfavorable. Her indicators, uh, on instructional leadership, all seven of us, um, rated her proficient. Management and operations, that's budget and fiscal maya, uh, matters, again, seven proficient. Family and community engagement, that is how Dr. Leclerc interacts with the community and draws everybody in to feel like they have a, a say, and there, she received five proficient and two exemplary. Professional culture, again, it's getting redundant, seven profi- uh, proficient, but it's exactly the right kind of redundant, um, and then we have a rating for impact on stu- student learning, and everybody agreed that there was a moderate impact on student learning, and again, I'm gonna say, there's not a lot you can do in one year's time, you start, you begin to implement programs, you're not going to see this, you know, profound impact, so moderate is just where you really wanna be. The om- uh, overall summative score was, um, unanimous for proficient, and then I just wanted to share out, um, some acknowledged accomplishments were, um, your speedy response to the air quality reported, uh, Whitebrook, uh, compliance with the Attorney General's time line, uh, your anonymous alerts on the anti-bullying app, the pre-K through eight stakeholders work group, your ongoing participation in pre-K school building project, and, uh, numerous people were very happy with you bringing in the numerous student and faculty groups, um, to present their work, so they really liked that. Adjectives describing Dr. Leclerc, professional, organized, communicative, thoughtful, and reflective, and responsive to concerns, so I would say this is a very nice evaluation. I guess we'll keep her, huh? Did anybody want to add anything?
I'm thrilled also with how Dr. Leclerc has performed, but I think it's important for people to understand, who may be listening, that if you've never gone through an evaluation process, wh- whether it is giving an evaluation or receiving an evaluation, that exemplary is something that they state right on the evaluation, that it's something, it goes well beyond what you normally expect, and it should be, serve as somebody who could go around the state and serve as a model. So I don't want anybody to think that because you don't hear or see a lot of exemplaries, that it's anything that's a shortfall on how Dr. Leclerc has acted and performed in her first year, because it's something, it's exemplary seems like, oh, you know, outstanding when you got a report card when you were little, it's not like that.
Well, even the scoring on the, the form itself is marked, it, it's colored very differently, highlighting proficient, because that's the target, that's where you wanna be. Anything else?
I guess one other thing I would just say, because I was one of these, uh, significant progresses, I think, so, just to explain my thinking behind that, was that, you know, these were goals that Dr. Leclerc set for herself, and I think a lot of times, um, when folks get into a leadership position like this, it's because they're very ambitious, and, um, I think that it speaks more to how, you know, sort of the vision that you had for what you hope to accomplish, you set these lofty goals for yourself, and sometimes you just don't have time for things, and it says nothing about the work that you did, if anything, it speaks more to what you hope to do in the future, so.
Can I add to that, because I think I had one of those as well, because of something similar that you stated, that you didn't have time to accomplish because you had lofty goals, or getting together with us, um, to be able to think about what we're gonna do with curriculum for the students, so it may have been our own meeting times also that we weren't able to get together to do that, not a shortfall for you. So, I think it's important.
I think for, for a first year, this is a really strong report.
I think this, this is a committee that is not afraid to be critical when this due, know that this is not just a rubber stamping, um, I know it was really pleasurable to sit and write an evaluation and to get to think about the year and all that you've accomplished, and, um, I just wanna thank you so much for, for joining us here and heading us in the right direction.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If I can just make a comment?
Sure.
Oh, stop, oh my gosh.
I was one of the ones who gave you the exemplary on family and community engagement, and the reason I did that is because, as a parent of a high school student, um, so many of the things that have happened throughout the year, you were so candid and, and open and communicative with all of us, not just me as a parent at the high school, it was with all of us, and that's not something that us, that, especially as a new member of the school committee was used to, you know, so I really appreciate the way that you have brought the community in, you know, right from day one, right before school started, you know, with, with the surveys that you did, and wanting everybody's opinion, and, you know, the five questions that you asked, you know, they were amazing, and I really appreciate that, and that was one of the things that I was so concerned with and wanted, and I feel like we've definitely, and you've definitely exceeded my expectations, and I appreciate that, thank you. You weren't afraid, you shouldn't have been afraid of me.
She wasn't really afraid.
Not with these, uh, these scores. Okay, on to matters for action.
Uh, yes, okay.
Or to the payroll.
Okay, next one.
I move to approve the school payroll dated June 6, 2019, in the amount of $532,086.42.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated June 6, 2019, in the amount of $165,384.13.
Second.
All those in favor?
I move to approve the minutes from our regular session meeting on May 28th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, all right, so, we are going to, I'd like to, uh, make a motion, to have someone second it, to do a roll call vote to go into executive session. We will not be ending this meeting, so we're gonna go into a short executive session, and return to regular, uh, session, okay?
I'll second that, that we're going into an executive session.
All right, so can we have a roll call vote?
Nicole Asher-Pell.
Shannon Dunham.
Maren Goldstein.
Cynthia Kuzensky.
Marissa Carrari.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Laurie Garcia. All right, so we will be back shortly.
It sounds like you're just saying letters.
All right, so, we are back in regular session, um, the purpose of our executive session was to determine, uh, and to negotiate, uh, the superintendent's salary, and after much careful thought, we came up with a proposal, so who would like to make that motion? Should I just make the motion and it gets seconded? Let Maren?
I'll make it. So, I'll put forward a proposal to, uh, increase the salary for the superintendent, uh, for both this year and next year, at 1.5% increase for each year.
I'll second that.
All right, and now we would need a roll call vote for that, do we have any discussion before we go? We're all set, okay?
Um, my only, the only thing I will say is, I'm still, like, in my head, I don't know where I'm going, anything that I do say, Allison, has nothing to do with you or your work, so just don't take it that way. I, well, I think, and I'll just say this, I think that, you know, we, we delivered it for 45 minutes, I think that it's really a recognition of trying to balance, um, uh, very happy that you've joined our district, and the performance that you've done this year has been very strong, um, and recognizing that we're, our budget now for two years has been loss, um, we all would certainly hope that the state is gonna get its act together and redo the formula and other aspects that affect our budget, so that in future years, our budget will start to go back up in a more healthy way, uh, but that is still undetermined, and so we still don't know really, um, we could be looking at a third budget next year in a row with additional losses, um, and so I think that that's why, um, we very much had a long conversation, uh, really looked at all the different sides of it, um, we also recognize that we're gonna be heading into, uh, teacher union organization negotiations this fall as well, for the renewing of their contract next July 1st, uh, and so there was a lot of factors that we took into it, uh, we looked at a lot of different places, um, and, uh, it took time for us to come to this place, um, and so, yeah, again, very much, none of this has to do with recognizing, um, the value of you as our superintendent is very much coming from a place of, um, looking at the numbers and all the different factors that go into our budget, um, but we did still agree, and that's why I'm putting forward a proposal for the 1.5% this year and next year in place.
So we'll call. So we'll do a roll call vote?
Uh, no.
You need to say your name?
Say your name, please.
Oh, Nicole Asher-Pell, no.
Shannon Dunham, yes.
Maren Goldstein, yes.
Cynthia Kuzensky, yes.
Marissa Carrari, yes.
Jonathan Schmidt, I'm still gonna abstain.
Laurie Garcia, yes.
So that is a majority vote, and so it will be 1.5 for two years. So now we're in regular session, so we can just have someone, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
And make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?